I don't know.
Well, in that case, no, I mean, if it's really a year.
Oh, you did. I slid it over my desk, but yeah. You found it. Right.
Me and now, I got it, I got it.
Mr. Bailey. I'm gonna start. I'm gonna bang. I call the regular council meeting for November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four to order. Everyone please rise for a pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Massa.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and take roll. Councilperson Bradley. Councilperson Kimfer. Councilperson Ginever. Councilperson Friedmeyer. Councilperson Fisher. Councilperson Bailey. Councilperson Winkelman. Councilperson Massa. Perfect. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the council meeting for November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, once you've had a chance to read through those. October twenty eighth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, I had none. Check register, bills, financial report, and sales tax report is in there, in your packet.
You have a question on, uh, who the vendor is, is WM? WM Corporate Services, twenty-two thousand, Waste Management?
Yeah.
So, we...
That's our dumping fees, so we still take our truck to Kimswick and dump it. So, we're paying for our trash service, plus the dumping fees up there, so... I believe Mr. Turner and them are getting that, that bid set up, just to, just to see...
Right.
What it would be to, to sub that out.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had, they were already operating somewhere, but that is the end charge.
Yeah, that's, that's what we get charged to...
It was in there a couple times a month.
Um, that's about a monthly...
That's a monthly charge, we go four days a week and then we get a monthly charge, about eighteen to twenty-five thousand.
I thought it was like two, it didn't hear twice this month was the other reason that it came.
Sometimes they come and they'll get the previous month.
Oh, yeah, one was like eleven-two and the other was eleven... Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee reports. Mr. Turner, you have your report in the packet.
I do, and I will speak on the plant, um, repair we had to do last week. Larry came in Friday and one of our two collector well pumps, uh, kicked on and immediately shut off. So, we got hold of the lanes who installed the pump back in eighteen, I think, when we redid that. They come out, we were hoping that a tree made it hard for wires, caused it to short out after getting the report back today. That was just common wear and tear on the pump, it just made itself out, so... Unfortunately, that was about thirty-two thousand of the building we were expecting, so we were able to, they had a four to five week loop time. We switched pump manufacturer and they were able to find one and get it in three days, so that was the only positive out of all of that, so...
Well, we gotta have water.
We gotta have water. And those are set up to run on even days and odd days for the plant, so there'll always be enough, you know, maintenance and time on, time on, so...
We have two, just to clarify, yep.
Other than that, everything else is running very well.
So, that was the new pump in two thousand and eighteen?
Um, it was refurbished, I guess, we had to redo the well.
Okay.
Larry somewhat filled me in, but I didn't really grasp it all in five minutes.
Alright.
We were never out of water, no, we had two and then just one went out, so... And we normally only run one.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Turner? Hmm, Chief Bovis, information's in there. They stayed busy this month as well. They did a good job wrapping up the football season, representing, doing, doing well. Mr. Sullivan? You have anything to add to yours?
Lots of stormwater meetings in the month of October, it seems like they're being culminated in October. Um, but then, uh, you can see on there, we're picking up quite a few wild animals. That continued into November this month, but with colder weather, looks like they're starting to slow down a little bit now, so... That's a good service that is provided here in Crystal City, um, and I know the folks appreciate that, so...
Perfect. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Alright, moving on. Chief Helms? Back in town? Successful to your season?
Very good.
And everything? Your report's very good, thorough, so thank you. If you don't have anything else to add, we'll move on. Moving on to council liaison report. Councilperson Fisher. Library and School Board.
Uh, November, there, there's a big book sale going on at the library, uh, but they're also closed, uh, from the twenty-eighth to the first. So, tomorrow through Wednesday is gonna be your last chance to go buy books at a brick price. And they have great artwork on the entrance over there, I think that's really nice.
Aye.
It's worth walking over there to see it if you haven't been over.
Alright. No, I, uh, walked in there and talked to Ms. Shirley, they're there, I, I see a lot of great things. I think they're doing like a, I don't have the date, I saw at a gingerbread house thing, uh, but they have a website very in detail, so... Good thing. Uh, Councilperson Bailey, Parks Board, Green Business.
Okay, the, uh, repairs to many of the roofs throughout the parks have been taken care of. The last park employee was laid off on October the thirty-first. Of course, they're going to be recalling those people either in April or maybe March, depending on the weather. Um, let's see, what else do we have here? The, um, one of the things that came up was, uh, some budget issues, and one of those was, uh, the roads, uh, in the park. They are looking for some help with those roads, and they're gonna be asking the city to probably take care of the roads. So, expect that to come this way.
I'd like to plan on...
They also have decided they will, uh, not have a meeting in December, but, uh, they'll have their next meeting in January.
Okay, the first Monday in January for the Park Board?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, before we move on, uh, I have been down to Ward One in a few months. Last time they were doing the Rock Court, Hickey White Park.
Hickey White is, uh...
They, uh, I stopped in today, they finished doing all the even strong, they're waiting on one light pole, one of the light pole switches. Um, the rock line was put in between one of the cords, so it's pretty much...
It's a usable...
I spoke with Conshugh Construction, after the first of December, they're gonna come and finish about a hundred and ninety feet of sidewalk to connect.
Yeah, it's a functional court. Golds are up, it's a... Yeah, it looks real good and clean, and when, last time I went down there, they had one court poles, light poles were up and stuff, but... It looks, yeah, moving right on. Alright, uh, moving on, Planning and Zoning, Councilperson Friedmeyer.
We have a meeting on Thursday, December the fifth, at six-thirty. Um, other than that, that's all I have.
Alright, thanks, sir. And Zoning Appeals Board, Councilperson Ginever.
Mr. Sullivan informed me that we have no meetings planned.
Alrighty. Moving on, public response, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the October twenty eighth meeting? Moving on. Old business, we have none. New business, we have our audit presentation. So, Ms. Malone? You have the floor. I have no idea how that works. Oh, yeah, it is. Yep, perfect. It's the side button.
Okay, so this, uh, presentation's gonna be on the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, financial statements. You all should have received, uh, our final, uh, fine found copy, as I said, you have them. Barbie also sent out, you sent a PDF copy as well. Okay, so a few key highlights. Uh, number one, the one, uh, major thing I want to point out is we now have an unmodified audit opinion. Previously, up until this past year, we were modified because of a certain, um, accounting standard that said we had to account for disposal costs of the sewer treatment plant. Well, that's gone now. So, we are now back in compliance with all of our GAAP requirements. We can officially issue an unmodified audit opinion, 'cause we don't have sewer treatment plant to have to worry about with all those special accounting rules. Couple other key highlights on the finance piece. The governmental activities, which is basically gonna be everything that's not water and sewer. Unrestricted cash decreased, investments increased, so with the interest rates, we can actually just put more in investment, since we don't need to have as much liquid cash. Our various taxes increased, net position overall increased, long-term debt went down, sales tax went up, gross receipts tax went up. So, very good financial outlook. We had brought in more income, our net position went up, we're holding on to more cash, uh, investments overall. Okay, so water and sewer, um, unrestricted cash increased, restricted cash decreased, which a lot of times that restricted cash, or what we consider restricted, is money that's just being held to pay the bonds. And, um, we had, uh, scheduled debt service payments this year of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so those are all, uh, satisfied accordingly. And then our net position also increased in water and sewer. So, across the board, the, the city made money and is sitting in a higher position this year than we were in the previous. And then I just did want to point out that the finalized sale of a sewer treatment plant resulted in a book gain of eight hundred and eight thousand. So, that's gonna, um, be a little, you, you should see that presented, it's a separate line item in the financial statements. I'm not entirely sure which page, but it would be in the income and loss, uh, section for the water. It'll be labeled at the top like proprietary fund for the water and sewer. Alright, so the next couple charts are just gonna look at the revenue and expenses over the last ten years. So, comparatively speaking, for the last ten years, twenty twenty-four is gonna be our highest sales tax year to date. Now, a lot of that is gonna be due to inflation, because the more that things cost, the more your sales tax is, right? So, some of that is not necessarily gonna be completely comparative, you gotta kinda keep that in mind when you're looking at the figures. Overall, since two thousand and nineteen, we have still made more money in sales tax, but everything, you know, the prices of goods and services have gone up too. The same with property tax, we have the highest property tax income that we've had in the last decade, but property values are appraising a lot higher, so therefore our property tax is also gonna be a lot higher. Okay, so on the flip side, because things cost more, we also now have the highest expenses that we've had in a decade. But I, we're covering everything, so I don't really can, like, see it as being a huge concern. We just like to kinda put that ten-year trend history on there, so you could see where we were back to fourteen compared to this year. Okay, so water and sewer, um, the way that we ran this in the two graphs that are next to each other, the charges for service is gonna be in the green line, and then the operating expenses are going to be in the red. So, overall this year, just in operating income, the water treatment plant did have a loss, but the water fund itself did have a huge gain, because there's gonna be some other factors that are considered into here that are not necessarily cash-related. So, the gain on the sewer plant, which is, it's a gain on the books, so it's not gonna necessarily tie to the future cash income that's coming in on the, uh, the sale. Additionally, this also picks up depreciation, which you guys have already outlaid the cash to pay for any repairs or anything else that has to be expensed for accounting rules over the life of certain things. So, depreciation is gonna be factored into there, and that's a completely non-cash-related expense that you'll pick up each year. Um, so those two items, just, uh, it did lead to your water, the water and sewer fund having an operating loss, but you could see, that's gonna fluctuate just based on the needs of what the plant has for that year. Um, and it would be the first time that that's occurred in quite some time, so any of the, uh, surpluses that have been built up between eighteen to twenty-three are gonna be utilized for, um, making up for that little bit of difference for this year. Alright, so our governmental activities debt, we, uh, once the refi, or the, um, the new debt was issued in twenty-one, that took the place of our notes payable, which were previously for fire truck and the street shed and a couple other things. Those are just gonna reduce as regular, uh, payments are made, those are scheduled debt service payments. So, I would anticipate, unless the city were to issue some new debt or anything else, this is gonna continue trending downward as those payments are made by the amortization schedule requirements. The same thing with your business-type activities, which it's the same debt issuance, it was just used for two different purposes, so this is gonna continue to drop in the same manner, based on those regularly scheduled debt payments. Okay, pension liability is my favorite, favorite slide, everybody's like, why do we have this? We still do have a pension asset, which means that the, uh, the funds that are sitting at loggers actually are in excess of what we would anticipate our actuarial valued future benefit payments are. So, that's gonna be presented on your financial statements as a net pension asset. There's a lot of things that go into this number for fluctuation, which is the required contribution that loggers has you make, the gains, uh, on investments at loggers that they have done so for investing funds on your behalf. There's changes in your employee pool, so if you have changes to your average age of your employees, or if even, you guys probably aren't even exploring changing your benefit level, but if you did, that can impact, uh, the number that they determine that you would owe. It's a perpetual number, they will never write you a check for your asset, and they will never come ask you to pay the liability. As long as you pay what they tell you you have to pay every year, you're good to go. Um, it's just, it, this slide could get really, really interesting if we go back in history, um, to times like two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when everything was kind of in the tank, so the market, it sort of mirrors where your market is. Okay, um, we'd only had one finding this year, which I think Barb's kind of elaborated on, maybe in a little bit of discussion so far, which was that there were three funds that were in excess of what the budgeted expenditures were. Meaning, we set our budget, we appropriated those funds, and then we spent more. Um, I do wanna note, it's a one-time isolated issue, the only thing that really caused it to go over was due to the timing of payroll. Usually, that last payroll of the year is ran, um, right on the thirty-first. However, this year, the thirty-first fell on Easter weekend, so the city was closed on that Friday, so it got bumped. And because of that, it caused those funds to have more expenses than were anticipated, because, um, we have a timing issue. It's pretty common for this to come up. There's not really a penalty to, um, to it, I mean, other than, hey, don't do this again. So, we just kind of recommend that on your FY twenty-five budgeting, that you're just a little bit more careful about taking a peek at those year-end expenses, making sure everything's in the right period, and that we've allocated enough funds to cover what we're gonna outlay. Um, well, they'd just be based on the timing, so you just have to look at your payroll schedule and then figure out when your pay dates are due. Yep. Yeah, yep. Um, usually Barb's really good about taking everything up and just making sure that enough, um, you know, appropriations are in place. It's, like I said, it's pretty common, you guys were not the first or only city I've ever seen that this happens to. Um, it, it happens more than you think, just 'cause everything really is an estimate, right? Even at GAAP, just doing your accounting, that year-end payroll, it, we didn't even have to cash out the door, just, we had our, the employees had worked the hours, so it's just, uh, just a timing issue, so...
So, when I figure, usually when I figure how much your budget, budget amendment needs to be, um, you know, I do that before Molly comes along. Well, this time without factoring in, there was gonna be an extra payroll accrued, I figured what it was, and wasn't the right amount, because...
Yeah.
One extra whole payroll. Usually payroll does fall, um, our payroll, like the big city payroll falls. We also changed it to every two weeks instead of twice a month, so that caused, uh, there to be three paycheck...
Yeah.
For that month too, so, kind of a variety factor, so...
Yeah, like, I, I don't wanna say it's not a big deal, because we, I still have to, you know, have a finding on it, but it, it's not a big deal. Like, it's pretty common, I see in a lot of cities, 'cause we're just estimating and trying to be the best we can with the numbers. Just, maybe just be a little more careful next year. That's pretty much it.
Nope, we'll handle that.
Yep.
That's an easy, easy fix there, so when we allocate it over and, and budget, it's... Hey, you're fine, you, you do fine, that's, it's alright. Does anybody have any questions for? Uh, we have this packet, we can go through that, and Barb is here two days a week, and you can always email us, she'll answer anything you have on that. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving on to new business, we got, um, the pool had a leak this summer, it was a two-inch copper line. The city fixed it, I think we updated it on there, but when we have a, a two-inch line leaking, there's water, water going. So, uh, basically, it's just a transfer of funds from the park fund to the water fund, because we, we, even though it's our water, we charge the park for water, and that's all. Jason budgeted fifteen thousand for it, it was thirty-one thousand in water for the pool, so... But that leak is fixed, and, I mean, it'll be realistically on to the next leak, because it's, it's just kinda how it goes, so... I'll, if no one has any questions on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer of thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifteen cents from the Stormwater Park Fund to the Water Fund. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We... Do we? Okay. Alright, well, perfect. I'll entertain a motion to approve our twenty twenty-four audit. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Sorry about that. I ran right past it. Uh, City Administrators Report, you have that in front of you. Couple things I'll point out on that, the, uh, candidate filing. It will be December tenth, and the last day is December thirty-first, five PM. We have Ward One, Mr. Ginever, Ward One, Mr. Bailey for a one-year term. Ward Two, Mr. Friedmeyer. Ward Three, Ms. Massa. Ward Four, Mr. Winkelman. So, those are up, and, uh... Everything else on there is... If you have any questions, Mr. Rasmussen will be back? Uh, Monday. He'll be back on Monday. Yeah, his son came into town, so he only gets to see him once, twice a year, so that's one of the things, when he comes in, he gets to take some of that time, so I fully support that. Um, Mayor's Report? Or if anybody has any questions over his admin report, that I might be of help to, but... Moving on to Mayor's Report. Uh, Public Works Department has done a good job, Mr. Turner, on the lease. They've, they've done good, city's clean, it looks nice. I like that, uh, we got the decorations up a little bit early this year to let the park use that bucket truck. It, it works when we, we work together, it's going well, so I like it. It does, and, and your crew's done a good job. Um, we do have a park event coming up with Santa Claus in the park, and the high school carolers are singing. That is on December thirteenth, there will be a carriage ride in the park. I believe they have, um, some things for the kids to do up there, color sheets, hot cocoa, things like that. That flyer will go out to the kids at, uh, Crystal City School, and anybody's welcome, but it'll be posted on Facebook and stuff. Five to eight on December thirteenth. Um, I have down, our new website is up and going, and, um, it's still a work in progress, I mean, it's just, we're working on it. I mean, if we need to change something, if you see something, let us know. Um, it's a quick thing, Shelley's done a good job on that, so I appreciate that. Then, um, one thing on the website, the, to view the videos and everything, it's on the lower left-hand side instead of the upper right, opposed to the old website, the Facebook and YouTube, it's switched areas, just so everybody, to look at any past meeting or anything of that nature. Um, and then, does anybody in the audience have anything to say on this meeting? No? Alright, uh, we have a Christmas parade that will be this Monday, starting at seven PM. Our Twin City Parade, it's kind of a big deal for our community, so get out there, we'll... I know it, I'll, I'll wear some gloves on that one. Um, and then we have Thanksgiving coming up, so City Hall will be closed Thursday, Friday, and then we'll reopen on Monday. And get ready, so everybody have a safe and thank, uh, safe Thanksgiving from my end, so... And we'll go around the table. Councilperson Bradley. Councilperson Kimfer. Councilperson Ginever.
I just wanna let everybody know that I had a meeting with, uh, Larry Glazer, the, uh, CEO of, uh, Crown Plastics.
Yes.
And it wasn't, he just likes to keep... And it wasn't, he just likes to keep us in the loop of what's going on, um... His, uh, lawsuit has gotten to the point where they're taking depositions now. For everybody's memory, it's, uh, an access road that's between his property and the airport property that he's used for thirty years, and, uh, he just wants party to say that he can use it legally, and he had to sue them to get their attention, so that's... Uh, he had Kennedy come up and do the deposition in his favor, so that was interesting. Uh, and that's about it.
Alright, well, thank you, sir. Councilperson Friedmeyer?
Nope, nothing.
Alright, Councilperson Fisher?
I don't have a thing. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, be safe and enjoy.
Councilperson Bailey?
Happy Thanksgiving, I do wanna comment about the leaf pickup, they're doing an excellent job, really appreciate it.
Uh, Councilperson Winkelman?
Pickup wanted to mention, thanks to the crews for making me look good with my constituents. One of my neighbors sent me a long text that went on and on, I said, okay, I'll look into it. And I delayed maybe a little bit, didn't call the city within an hour. They're here, way to go, man, when we talk to you, things happen, I was like, okay.
Yeah, we've been doing pretty good. I, I'm pretty, I'm, I'm very happy with where we're headed. Yeah, that's alright, we'll take what we can get on that. Uh, Councilperson Massa?
Um, the only thing we had, Mr. Bradley and I both had someone contact us, but I think we kind of dealt with it, I don't know, I haven't heard about it.
I ain't, I ain't heard anymore, but, I don't, I don't even know the people's names, so...
Yeah, they, they live on Sunridge, uh, Sunridge, and they were upset about, um, sunraining sixty-one, sixty-seven.
Oh, the stoplight, you asked me.
Yeah, and, uh, we told them that it had to be like a MoDOT.
That's a MoDOT.
Yeah, I told them everything we've done in the past, and I'm not sure they're familiar with how to get through town to the stoplight on Eighth Street, so I told them that. And told them that, you know, in the mornings, rush hour, middle of the day, five o'clock, if you're going south, just drive on down to the stoplight.
Yeah. That is the safest, and...
No, it's no problem.
Right. No, it's hard to get out, uh, right there at tire bargain, so it's, it is, and that's a MoDOT. And Mr. Turner, doesn't MoDOT do like fifteen or twenty feet on...
Yeah, I don't know exactly where they come all the way.
They, yeah, so, yeah, that's the right thing to do, is recommend them to MoDOT, 'cause we have no...
Yeah, we're not even allowed to touch the stop signs at those intersections, we don't put it in the right spots, and...
Yeah, they're tire bargains on Eleventh Street, either way.
Yeah. Okay. Alrighty, well, well, with that being all, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys, thank you for your evening.